And ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me open my bag, I hit the pull-out train.
Thank you. We are going to start with meeting minutes from our very efficient workshop meeting, December 28th. Have you all had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Before we jump into the regular business, I just want to, I got this afternoon, a news release from Central Hudson about, you thought we had our big, big weather event yesterday, but there's another one coming. Damaging wind gusts, heavy rains may cause power outages in Central Hudson service area. Tomorrow, it's calling for, from, starting Tuesday night, when I looked at my weather app, it's starting tomorrow afternoon, starts with snow, turns to rain very quickly, two to three inches of rain in some areas, wind gusts of up to 60 miles an hour in some areas. Could topple trees and tree limbs, creating potential for service interruptions? I will say that one of the reasons why we cut down trees when they are not in, not healthy anymore is to avoid having these sorts of emergencies come up when the weather gets bad. But, couple things that is mentioned here, heavy rains coupled with warm temperatures melting the recent snowfall have the potential to cause significant flooding. Oh, actually, this isn't our, our big issue. Having flooding may undermine natural gas lines and customers are urged to report gas odors they may detect. If you smell gas, don't turn on your cellphone, don't turn on the lights, move away, and have your neighbor call 911. Down line, down, downed power lines, whether you know if they're cable or power, don't touch those, because those could be live and you don't want to be in the water with them. So, just be aware, bad weather coming. Okay, on to regular business. So the first is bond council. You have in your packet a fee letter from Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood. They are, they have been our bond council for a number of years, and they have been our bond council for the sewer project. What this is specifically for is the process of having EFC. They, we currently have short-term financing with them for the sewer project. We also have a loan from USDA RD, and we are, we also have a grant from USDA RD. What the plan is for EFC is going to be doing the long-term financing, and it is no, it is a no-interest loan. They are going to pay off the USDA loan, and this fee letter is related to, and that, when it talks about the refunding bond, it's that EFC is going to be refunding USDA, and so we need to have a formal agreement with our bond council. So, I am going to ask for a motion to authorize me to sign this fee letter.
So moved.
Thank you, Kim, second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve, any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
It says that the fee would be no more than $15,000. Will we get, once it's, once it's like signed and gone through, will we get a final number on that?
Um, not, not until the work is done, but that cost is covered by, the cost is part of the project cost.
Okay.
So it's covered by the USDA loan, grant, actually.
And a related question, when they say not in excess, it's likely to be at or about $15,000. Wouldn't likely be materially less, I'm assuming.
It's, I would like to think that they have, they know, I mean, they have a pretty good sense of what they're, what they're doing. I would be a little surprised if it was materially less. But that's the beauty of not to exceed, as we know, we go over that. The sad part is if it does, if it, if it's materially less, we just get less of the grant from USDA. So, it will not make a meaningful difference to the village of Red Hook. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that part is done. The next piece is, the town of Red Hook is re-upping their contract with the Red Hook Fire Company, and because the Red Hook Fire Company is located in the village of Red Hook, the town's agreement with the fire company, we are a party to it as well. And what you see in your packet is, the town's contract is on a calendar basis, because the town's budget is on a calendar basis, and the, the main difference is the cost, the dollar amounts that are associated with, with their contract. And so, this is on the agenda, because we need to, you all need to authorize me to sign this contract. So if I could have a motion to authorize me to sign this contract?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie, any questions? I believe it's a slight increase from before, but I, I'm afraid I didn't write down what they used, what they had before. Hearing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. The next item is a resolution related to the, the new garbage and leaf truck. We purchased that truck in August for a cost of $218,000, and at the time, we financed it with a short-term loan, with the intention of moving to longer-term financing, and at the same time, reducing the, the long-term financed cost using other funds. And so this resolution is to approve using, we have a highway reserve fund, which you hear about every month. The current balance as of the end of December is $29,213.87, and I am proposing that we use the vast majority of that, of $29,000, to take it out of the, out of the reserve fund. Because it is a capital reserve fund, it is, it, it require, it is a, there is the opportunity for a permissive referendum should the residents of the village feel this is not a good use or an appropriate use of the reserve fund. And then also, we do the CHIPS funding, which comes from the state. We have $39,000 available in our CHIPS allocation after we pay for the paving that we did, and I'm proposing that we, that we use that CHIPS funding to reduce the total refinancing, refinanced amount. There may be other sources of funding, and I will be coming back to you with the actual long-term financing, but I wanted to put this on record and get your all's approval. The CHIPS funding, our treasurer is in the process of applying for reimbursement for the paving, and I wanted to add this portion of the, for the truck to that application, and so I wanted to get your approval for those two things. Happy to take questions now or after a motion? Suppose I should do a motion. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
I think Steve was first on that one. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you.
That's resolution number one.
Ooh, yeah, that's a new year.
Oh.
So we go by, the resolution numbers go by calendar year? Okay, they do now.
Well, it does say 2024. Yeah, it's up to the year, so.
That's true.
It's always been.
Okay. The next item is actually related to the last item to some degree, online auction contract. So the old garbage truck, we have put up for auction, and the highest bid that we got was $10,000, and our highway foreman felt that was too low. He felt we should be able to get more money than that. So he is proposing that we go to a different auction house, which is Auctions International, because it's a, it's bigger, and thus, it's got a greater reach, and the hope certainly is that we would get a better number, a better bid for the old garbage truck. The alternative that, that our highway foreman has proposed is to take it apart and sell it in pieces, and he's hoping not to have to do that. So I'm asking for an authorization to, for me to sign this online auction contract. A motion, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any other questions?
Has the village or any of the other local governments had experience with this firm?
I, I, in concept, yes, because they are very large and do a lot of business. I do not have specific examples of that. I do know that they allow you to not accept a number, so for example, if, if it's lower than we want to accept, we are allowed to say no. The one thing that this firm allows you to do that the other one doesn't is, if, for example, what you really want is a minimum of 15, and you get a bid for 10, you can call the bidder of 10 and say, look, if you, if you offer 15, you can have it. The other company doesn't allow you to do that. But I, specific example, no. I do trust our highway foreman. I think he's, he's pretty good at these things, so I, I will say I'm going on faith from that standpoint.
Agreement seems straightforward.
Any other questions?
I'm relatively unfamiliar with auctions like this. Is there a timeline for like a non-compete, or like, so like switching to a different auction house, is there a certain timeframe in which if we don't get a bid that we, or our highway foreman thinks is appropriate, we can then move to either selling by pieces or going somewhere else or selling independently that we are bound to? I didn't see it necessarily in the contract, but.
I don't.
This says the seller may terminate this contract at any time for convenience, so I'm assuming.
Is that?
That's in the second paragraph, the last sentence.
I don't know if that covered, like, having it listed elsewhere, but I guess so.
I think if you can cancel your contract, then, and there's no indication that you can't put it elsewhere, I think we're, we're good to go. This is, and I also don't expect that there's a whole lot of competition in this realm. People are either going to buy it through the auction or, or not, is my sense. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. There are no budget adjustments for tonight. Just make a note that our workshop meeting is January 25th, and our next board meeting is February 12th. And so now we're into department and committee reports, and I'm now going to put my Lori Urban hat on. Lori is, is homesick, and so there are a couple things to note. The vouchers, when you get there, some of the vouchers are not included in the financial report that you have, because they haven't yet been entered into the QuickBooks, into QuickBooks, but there is a list of them in the, in the binder. And general fund, it's about $14,500 worth of invoices, and for, for the water fund, I think it's about $500. But this, so, but the treasurer's report, the account balances are as of the end of December, so the general fund is $1,039,317.57. The water fund is $463,017.8. Payroll clearing account is $36,047.92. And just to clarify, the payroll clearing account, we put money into it to cover payroll, so when there's a balance, it just means that the payroll hasn't all been, hasn't all cleared, it's really a timing issue. Sewer fund is $84,459.84. Hard Scrabble is $3,443.68. Village Green is $8,532.88. Health insurance is $11,967.91. And just to clarify, the health insurance fund, the village covers the deductible payments, which are done through a debit card, and so this is a separate account specifically for those debit cards, and the amount in there, we want to keep it, it's a little on the high side, but we want to keep it so that it has plenty of money in there to cover any deductions. Petty cash is $52.93. The reserve checking balances, fire, the fire reserve is $7,637.10. The police reserve is $17,344.56. The USDA water, water reserve is $141,126.66. And I say water because this is an account that was set up as required by USDA after our water project, phase two, I'll possibly phase one, I forget which is which, but we are also required to set up reserve for the sewer system, and so at the end of this fiscal year, we will be creating a sewer reserve, a USDA sewer reserve. The highway reserve is $29,133.35. Snow reserve is $3,332.72. Tower reserve is $17,998.97, 94 cents. Unemployment is, did I print this out wrong? I might have. I think the tower reserve just went over $18,000, but never mind, it's close enough. Unemployment is $7,139.45. Court reserve is $3,352.14, and the office reserve is $988.30. Just to, probably at our workshop meeting, I will be reviewing these reserve funds so we can start talking about, they, they, most of them go back many, many years, the earliest I've, at least until 2005. But I would like to clarify what their purpose is, and perhaps consider closing one or two of them that have very little dollars in it, but, but also to more, to clarify what their purpose is, and so that we understand what they're there for and use them appropriately. And then the monthly expenses, general fund was $419,160.78, and that is particularly high. We paid for a full year of, of retirement, both for police, villager, villagers, and fire, and then, and we also paid for $95,000 worth of paving. Water was $55,063.45. Payroll clearing account is $2,517.26. Sewer was $7,217. And that is the treasurer's report. Do we have to accept that? Motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And just a comment, if I got any of that wrong, Lori will correct us at the next meeting. Okay, the next item, so we have another staff member who's been out for several days with one of the many illnesses that is going around, and so I do not have the police report, and the fire department tells me that they've been particularly busy, so I don't have the fire department report either. And the next thing is the sewer project. So this is the infrastructure project, and as mentioned many times, the substantial completion was achieved March 30th, 2023. And the electrical contract is done, finished, all paperwork in, completely done. General contract, the record drawings, we, we are awaiting one final edit. I'd mentioned the photographic documentation, per contract, they were required to give us both pre and post photo, basically photographs of the project. The pre photos have been received, and the post photos, we are deducting that portion of the contract, because we will be not, not be receiving those photos. And then there are just a few properties that, where the grass hasn't been restored to an acceptable level, so reseeding will take place in spring of 2024. Relating to financing, USDA Form E number 12, which is basically their form for requesting payment, was sent in December 20th. With that, we have expended $7,942,854.35. That leaves $504,263.65. Of this, $329,000 and change is retainage. This is a unit price job, and so there are some units, there's a corrective change order that's coming, which is actually, will be a reduction of about $90,000 for the actual units that were provided, if that makes sense. And so as I say, that the, the total project amount will not be over budget. We did request an extension of USDA to complete the final paperwork. The electrical contract is complete. The general contract has two final change orders to complete. One, a change order four is for a labor rate increase. An approved amount has been sent to the contractor, and that's awaiting their approval. And then the, the final contract reducing is a reduction that finalizes quantities on the project for unit price items, as I explained. This one is also with the contractor for approval. And if we are under budget, all it means is that the total of the USDA grant that we receive will be less. It will not reduce the amount that we are required to finance, which is, which is too bad, but that is the way it's set up. So that's it for the sewer project. The library, the library held their December meeting on Tuesday, December 19th. In terms of public that was attending, it was me and also local resident Linda Keeling. And I'm, I have a report, much of what I have here will also be on the, in the minutes when the library posts those, but the president, Don O'Shea, thanked new members of the board for their interest in service. He spoke about Mid-Hudson Library article about the importance of libraries and the importance of freedom of reading. They did talk about the election of officers. Don O'Shea said that he was not planning to continue as president, but would stay on for a couple of months to make for a smooth transition. The board approved Amy Houston to continue as treasurer and Sarah Devere to continue as secretary. A motion was made to elect Martha, Martha De Peppa as vice president. This motion was tabled pending full board attendance, because Gareth Davies and Anna Gregg were not in attendance. They mentioned that the board development committee will review the bylaws. There was a discussion around the bylaws state that if you miss three consecutive meetings, that you are off the board. They mentioned that Patricia, who goes by Trish Scully, has been moved from part-time to full-time. Under the treasurer finance report, as of the end of November, they had $429,943 cash, and their reserve fund is at $149,000. They mentioned a goal to be a year's worth of operations, being 440 to 450,000. The 259 funds, which come from the school, which is $208,000, arrived in December, so the current cash is actually, at that time, was $633,000. It was a, but, a review of the budget. The 2023 budget versus actual, all except programming is way under budget. 2023 was projected to be 7,000 under budget, the actual is 54,000 under budget. 2024, the budget is $482,9799, and that was approved. The director gave his report, mentioning that foot traffic is, was up versus the prior month, and total circulation up, is up, but that is driven by e-circulation. For programming for 2024, they're looking to have all programs connected with a focus on sustainability, natural science, and the environment, and they're looking to not duplicate efforts of Tivoli or Reinbeck libraries. Portion stucco building projects are projected to go out to bid in March, with expected completion by the end of August. And just if you haven't, if you're not clear, the stucco is the outside of the building, so that means they'll be, they'll have scaffolding. Thank you, on the outside of the building, it sounds like, for most of the spring and spring through the summer. And then the porch is going to be redone, so I'm not sure if that's going to have an impact on how you get into the library, but there'll be more updates on that, I'm sure. They have a, they did receive a, a design for the teen room from Rick East, who is a local village resident. They are cosmetic changes only. Sally McDwyer McNulty is relaunching the Friends of the Red Hook Library. I believe they have a meeting scheduled in, later in January to discuss that. The strategic plan needs to be revised in 2024. They're developing a logo for the library with Valeria Rosiva. They will be working on library sustainability certification, which will start with a review of policies. Fundraising, they had a discussion around fundraising, they talked about new business. They're going to be holding a board workshop on January 20th, they'll actually hold it here at Village Hall. And then under public comment, Linda Keeling commented that the library's elevator is not ADA compliant, it's too small, and the bells are out of sync. She also suggested that library needs a policy to address accommodation for people with disabilities. I commented that I, that I asked them to reconsider their target of a year's worth of operations as a reserve, given that the majority of their annual income is guaranteed through the town's 414 and the school's 259 funding. Amy Houston offered that this was recommended by the Mid-Hudson Library. I asked that they consider understanding what the purpose of the reserve is, so that it's clear to the taxpayers who are funding the service. I did also mention the change in the county loop bus schedule, that it would be no longer servicing Red Hook, and encouraged the board and Alex, the executive director, to advocate for reinstating this service. The meeting was adjourned at 8:15. And in my report, I actually have a link to where you can find the board documents for the library. And upcoming events, they mentioned the library trivia event, which is February 4th, the afternoon at Cancun's, and apparently, you need to get your team ready, because the event fills up quickly. Next on my list, just an update on the personnel payroll. I've mentioned that we're moving to ADP Time Keep to go away from physical time cards to an online system. All hourly employees are now using both the Time Keep punch clock, which is the software, and also physical time cards. We'll continue to use both for a little while, just to make sure all the kinks are worked out. And the pay week for all village employees is now the same. After the last pay period in December, everyone's week starts on Friday and ends on Thursday. And then just a note on communications, the January newsletter went on yesterday, and if anyone has any village news that they think should be considered for the newsletter, please send it my way, picture's always welcome, mayor@redhooknyvillage.org, always appreciated. And I attended the, I attended the town EDC meeting in, in place of deputy mayor, who was not able to attend. not able to attend. And I do not have my report because my notes are buried somewhere on my desk, so I will have a report at the next meeting on that. I can say that the EDC is doing a farmers' meeting. They're having a meeting, as you know, where they have invited the local farmers. It will be Thursday, January 11th at 8:00 AM here at Village Hall. And anyone is welcome to attend. And the idea is to hear from local farmers, to hear what their concerns are and any opportunities that EDC can be of assistance to the important agricultural industry in our area. And that, well, and the deputy mayor is not here, so those are my reports. But, oh, I guess the only other, since I'm also technically building in grounds for the facility, is the hybrid water heater has been installed in the building, and it is happily functioning. So hopefully, we'll be able to track how much we're saving on our fuel bill, since we moved to a hybrid system. Okay, so deputy mayor is not here tonight, so I will read her reports. Red Hook Together, which meets the first Thursday of the month at various different times and locations. Invitations and meeting times are coordinated by Bard CCE. This month's meeting was held in person on January 4th at noon at Historic Red Hook's Elmandorf Inn, with lunch provided by Historic Red Hook. Discussion ranged around next steps to address Dutchess County's plan for discontinuing bus service to Red Hook, as well as creating a group of people who wanted to meet to discuss the lack of access to mental health service. This is actually probably a good time to mention that we have heard, I have heard from our county legislator, and in discussion this Thursday at the committee meeting, on the agenda is a proposal to put the C route back onto the, back onto the schedule. The county has done a review and analysis of how much it will cost, and they have determined that that is, I think it's $160,000, $180,000, something like that. And so they have determined that, given the public outcry, that it's worth them reconsidering. So there's a committee meeting on Thursday that I am planning to attend to share my positive support for that item. And it will be on the agenda for, assuming it goes, makes it through committee, it will be on the agenda at their meeting next Tuesday. And if they vote, if they vote for it, then that will put the C route back on the, back on the schedule. What I would like to do, we need to do that first, and once that is done, what I'd like to do is to work with, and I believe there's a group, there is a group of people who have talked about, how can we make the bus service even more useful to more people? Could there be some changes that would actually increase the ridership? And we do have a project, we're still waiting to hear if we are going to receive our mid-grant, and part of that is to move the bus stop, which is right out front, which is not particularly welcoming, to just north and create a much nicer area and a covered area for people waiting for the bus. So that's just one part of that grant, but we're hoping to receive that or some notification. As far as I know, they have not indicated who, they have not given out the mid-grants yet. So that is, that is happy news. Democracy at work. The Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 in Village Hall, in the conference room. June 3rd's meeting focused on what does the village do for you, bro sure, that will be shortly sent out for translation. If you haven't yet, please visit redhookvillage.org backslash notify me to sign up for village notifications, as well as redhookvillage.org backslash newsletter to subscribe to the mayor's monthly newsletter, which, as I mentioned, went out yesterday for January. Village Events Committee. The Events Committee holds public meetings on the third Monday of each month at 6:00 PM at Village Hall. January's meeting time falls on Martin Luther King Day, and alternate meeting date is still being coordinated. At the December 18th meeting, the committee set the hardscrabble date for September 14, 2024, so 9/14/24, 9/14/24, whichever way you'd like to embed it in your brain. We also discussed development of an event permit and the ideal scheduling and location of 2024's neighbors' night, so we don't have dates for those yet. But the intention is to, is to replicate neighbors' nights. We had three last year. If you're interested in attending a meeting or volunteering to bring events to the village, please contact the committee chair, Amy Smith, by email at events@redhooknyvillage.org. Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee holds public meetings every first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in the Village Hall conference room. The next meeting will be February 1st, and at the January 4th meeting, multiple guests from the Red Hook community shared feedback regarding possible outreach efforts of the committee. We also discussed next steps regarding the delayed Indigenous History Project. No final decisions were made. We are continuing to look for members who are interested in working towards a vision of Red Hook, where all who live, work, study, or visit Red Hook are valued for who they are and are empowered to engage in community life. For further details, email humanrelations@redhooknyvillage.org. And last, we have the Village Highway Department. Brush and leaf pickup is concluded till spring. Christmas trees will be picked up at the end of, until the end of January. The new garbage truck will be used for garbage pickup, starting, well, it was supposed to start today, but it's, they had, they had a hiccup in getting the leaf portion off the truck. That has now been solved, so next Monday will be the debut for garbage pickup for the new truck. And I will mention that if you wonder where the Christmas trees go, they actually go to local farms for, as a treat for the goats. I was not aware that goats ate Christmas trees, but apparently they do.
They love Christmas trees.
You know, new things, one, exactly. A reminder that there's no all-night street parking in the village from November 1st through March 31st. Vehicles parked on the streets between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM may be ticketed and towed at the owner's expense. Please keep streets clean for seasonal plowing. Property owners are reminded to remove athletic equipment, garbage receptacles, and/or any other temporary obstacles from the side of streets to prevent possible damage during snow and ice removal operations. My guess is if anybody left any of those things out, they have been plowed along. And then, snow and ice on the sidewalks in the village, just another reminder that the property owner and/or acumen of every building with an adjoining sidewalk must remove all snow and ice within 24 hours after the end of its snowstorm. If snow or ice is not cleared within that time period, the village may remove it at a cost of $2 per linear foot to the property owner. Charges will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. Scrap metal program. Revenue received since the last report was $674.50. Total revenue for this fiscal year-to-date is $4,771.30. Since our budget was $4,500, we're already over budget, which is great. Since the program's inception in September 2007, donations have yielded a total of $52,649.44. Proceeds from the program go toward purchases of tools and equipment for the Public Works Department. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the village clerk's office to schedule a pickup. It's a great program. Nice way to get rid of stuff. Metal stuff.
Washing dryer.
There you go. They took your washer and dryer. That's a, that's a perfect. If you have bulk items, we have a garbage tag for bulk items. You can call the village clerk's office for more information about that, or it's on the website as well. What's that?
Would they take an old gas grill?
Yes.
Yeah.
How about an old metal fire pit?
Yes.
Sure.
Excellent news.
Yes, they'll come pick it up.
That's great.
Call, you can, you can, you can call Jen at clerk's office, or you can call the highway department, and...
Guys, they'll come get it out of your backyard and everything.
That's sweet.
Yeah.
Maybe wait for the snow to melt out a little bit.
They might appreciate that.
Yeah.
It's a win-win all around. It gets it out of your hair, so to speak, and, and the money.
Generates money for...
And it generates money for, money for the highway department. Okay, with that, I'm done. Trustee Lang, you're up.
So we'll start off with materials management. And let me see. Okay, so for the month of December, we'll start off with the recycling. We collected 0.95 tons of commingled, 0.55 tons of cardboard, 0.91 tons of paper, for a total recycling volume of 2.41 tons. At the same time, we also collected 3.79 tons of garbage. And then, this month, and going back to when we started using this Welsh dumpster, when our, our old garbage truck died, we had to fill the gap. So I presume, once we've worked out the kinks and the new truck is running, no...
It's working very well.
It's a, it's an excellent question that you were about to ask. You were assuming that the dumpster would go away.
Well, I was wondering, yeah.
And so, great question that Mel Cork and I actually discussed with Jake, but what he had said was, it's, what we used to do was to keep any garbage, particularly, so there are garbage, the village garbage cans around the, around the village, and those get picked up, at this point, at least twice a week during the, during the summer, they get up, picked up three times a week. And so that garbage needs to go somewhere, and it used to be stored in the garbage truck, which is probably not great for the truck. So this way, it can be held in the dumpster. If anything else comes up, it can go in the dumpster, and then Welsh actually takes it away. So it's probably something that we will keep for a little while longer, and then look again and say, does this make sense?
Okay.
But it seems to be, it has the potential to be something that doesn't cost a whole lot to help facilitate the activities of the highway department.
Okay.
And I think it offsets some travel, so it's less wear and tear on the vehicles.
It offsets some travel during the season when, well, I guess the other piece is when the truck gets re, the leaf part, the leaf hose gets put back on in the fall, it really is inefficient to take it off to, to pick up garbage. So it is likely that Jake will do what he did this fall and just leave, leave it on the truck, which means that they'll be picking up the garbage with their regular, you know, what they've been doing. And they definitely need somewhere to put the garbage that way.
Right. Okay.
But it is, it does, because Welsh picks up that garbage, it, it can reduce the number of trips that they take across the river.
Right.
To, to deliver. So that's something, we'll, we'll have to look at all those factors to see, but it, it does appear that it has a benefit.
We're using the new truck regularly, then, yeah. That would give us a good idea, too.
Yeah.
Okay, just last on the materials management, we did sell $2,973 worth of tags. I mean, that's from here and from the library and from taste buds as well.
Also, and I think it's worth mentioning that on the garbage tons, it's a big jump from November, because in November, we didn't include the tonnage from the Welsh bin. And I think in December, we now have that additional quantity, I believe.
Right.
I might have to go back.
Yes.
Sort of goes back to what it was back in July, which makes sense.
Still some tweaking to happen, but yes. Moving along to the Village Eretic Water Treatment Facilities monthly report for the month of December. So during the month, the water treatment facility treated 6,662,400 total gallons, which is an average of 214,900 gallons per day. That's pretty close to where we were at the same time last year. So that looks fairly good. We did, as we always do, sent off three samples for bacteriological testing, and they all came back clean, not present at actionable levels. And during the month of December, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite, and that comes to an average daily use of 2.4 gallons per day. So a fairly normal month from the water supply side of things.
Do you want to report on the WEA projects, or do you want me to do that?
I think your finger is on the pulse of the WEA projects.
I live and breathe it. And I should, I will write up something for the next meeting, but the WEA project that we have, we had originally proposed four projects, and we had an order of priority. The first one was updating the SCADA control system for our water system. That went to bid first. And then we had the tower rehabilitation, which is the water tower on Tower Street, where the primary thing that's happening is the inside of the tower is going to be repainted. And then there are other small projects around that. And then the third thing is to replace the water mains on Cherry and Grave Street. And we, all three of those projects have now gone out to bid, and we have awarded projects, and the money is done. We do not have money for the fourth project, which frankly, we were expecting, but that's the, the water interconnect between the town water system and the village water system that is in the northern portion of the village, through the western part of Cookingham Farm. And that particular system, the idea was that if the town was in an emergency situation, the village could supply them with water and vice versa. It works from the village to the town. It does not work from the town to the village. And so the project that we had proposed was to fix the issue. The water pressure goes down dramatically when, when we use that system, so it needed a series of pumps. The good news is, the idea was to be in an emergency situation, and we do have, we do have the water in the tower, and we have two water, other water tanks that hold, so we have about four days' worth of an average water use. So we do actually have emergency backup water. At some point, we will, we will bring that project back up. But in terms of the SCADA project, we are just waiting for a project schedule. We expect that that will start actually soon, because there's a number of things that they can do that doesn't require being outside. The tank rehabilitation can't start until the SCADA is up and running. And our expectation is that that will likely be late spring. And then the Cherry and Grave Street water, water main replacement is not dependent on either of those other projects. And we are, again, getting, getting the required paperwork, et cetera, from the contractor, but we expect that that project will go probably late spring. Some indication earlier rather than later, but we have no indication of that yet. So that's where we are on the SCADA projects. And that's water. Okay, anything else, Charlie?
That's it for me.
Okay. Trustee Bradley Brinkert.
Good evening. For the Village Green Committee, the monthly report for December, the current balances for the Village Green is, we spent $440.03 for community beautification, 168 of that went to the Kusicki Farms, and $212.13 went to Agway. For the shade tree contractual expenses, we spent $11,592. $1,642 was for Shikdell's Nursery for the tree planting in the fall. And $9,950 went to Dave's Tree Service for the maintenance that occurred over the last few months. And the Village Green Committee checking is $8,532.88, after checks were paid out for the plaques for the VFW benches to complete the bench installation at VFW and for tree plantings. There were no formal Village Green Committee... There were no formal Village Green Committee meetings held during the month of December due to illness, and December meeting was pushed back to January. We will be meeting this Sunday to discuss a formal change to our meeting schedule to better accommodate the end-of-year schedules and the annual crunch time. Residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent village street or New York State Highway right-ofways, volunteering for planting days, or sponsoring a Village Green Committee beautification project, may contact David Pearson, myself, or the Village Clerk, Jen Kavanaugh. And the Village Green will start to plan the Spring Arbor Day celebration and tree planting at the upcoming meeting. The planting will be held in early spring, usually in April. We will get a more solidified date once we get verification from the nursery of delivery. Meetings are open to the public, and are, we are actively seeking members for our community to join the committee, and as I stated, the next scheduled meeting will be Sunday, January 14th. For the Sewer Department, we continue to meet regularly to discuss bigger plant and to address requests for future connections to the sewer system. We should have our report from the engineers about the total expansion capacity in March or April, which will line us up for upcoming grant cycle. And during the month of November, we averaged 14,000 gallons per day in the Red Hook plant and 38,000 gallons per day in the BK plant. There were five samples sent out for testing, and all came back within the normal range for compliance. And for the old plant, one process train is down for review for deficiencies, and clogging has been an issue for some time at the pump station. It is recommended that a pump station mixing should be implemented to help with pump failure and pump station pumpouts. As a reminder to all residents, whether you're in the sewer use area or not, please be kind to your pipes. Only put the three Ps in the toilet pee, poop, and toilet paper. And while in the kitchen or near other drains, no fats, oils, or grease, also known as fog, they clog up the pipes and make the system stressed. What goes down your drain matters. If you're in the sewer use area and the emergency alarm goes off, call the Village Sewer Operator at 845-758-1081 and press option 8. Press the silence alarm button only after notifying the sewer operator. And do not open or tamper with village-owned equipment, such as your pump or septic. For the speed limit initiative for the month of December, Creighton Manning is moving forward an all-encompassing traffic study that will take into consideration a school zone, village roads, and the main throughways. We have connected to the firm with, we have connected the firm with the Red Hook Central School District to coordinate appropriate timings to conduct studies to impact school zone findings, and they will compile a report based on their study and their findings to aid in the documentation to lower the area village speed limit to 25 miles an hour. The lower speed limit will help residents, businesses, and the overall safety of our village streets. For the Town of Red Hook, Greenway and Trails Committee, due to the holiday season, this meeting did not meet during the month of December, and the next scheduled town meeting for Greenway Trails Committee is scheduled for the second Thursday of the month, which is this week. And for the Climate Smart Communities, with the end of the year and holidays, there had been no movement with this committee. We should hear back in the next month about whether or not our funding through Cornell Cooperative Extension comes through. And that's the end of my reports.
Super. Thank you.
Welcome.
Trustee Appen Zeller.
Okay, for the Village of Red Hook Building Department, there were five building permits issued, one certificate of occupancy, and nine certificates of compliance. There were no municipal searches, and likewise, orders to remedy stop work orders, do not occupy notices, court appearances, and complaints were zero. There was one fire inspection, and the fee income generated from this activity was $2,947.75. Planning Board Actions, at their December 14th meeting, a site plan application for 59 Fisk Street was tabled to the January 11th meeting. Also tabled to that meeting was a site plan application for 60 East Market Street, and a lotline alteration for 49 West Market Street and John Street was also tabled to that meeting, where a public hearing will be set. There was no zoning board of appeals meeting in December due to no agenda.
Steve, just to clarify, so the public hearing for the lotline alteration, is that, is that January, on January 11th?
Yes, that will be at the January 11th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
There was no Public Spaces Initiative meeting held since the last update. I'm not sure, I have to check with the chair when the next meeting is scheduled, but during the winter, it will be primarily planning for the springtime and for the new upcoming season of activities. On the Zoning Review Committee for the Cookingham East Gateway Project, the mayor and I will be meeting with Nelson Pope and Voorhees, who is the consultant. Kind of an update meeting at this point, while we're waiting for RUPCO to hear back on their Momentum Grant, which is kind of a key milestone and decision point for how that moves forward.
Okay. General business, any, any other general business anybody wants to bring up or discuss? Okay, I don't hear any public comment. Anybody like to make a comment? Take that as no. There's no executive session. I'd like a motion to approve the vouchers after review.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Without any other business, I'd like a motion to adjourn. You can make that motion. Wait, who, who's, who made the motion?
I invited.
Steve, second?
I just heard a second. I didn't hear, I didn't actually hear a motion, I just heard a second.
I, I think we need an official second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.